According to the Division of the Open Public Leading Act, the public notice meeting has been sent to board members of all district schools, the Herald News, the Urban Trend, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent's office, the board attorney, Kable Livingston of Orwin, and West Milford community 77, and posted in the administration building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Mrs. Francisco, roll call for attendents, please.
Mrs. Romeo, Mrs. Stevenson. Here. Mr. Compton.
Here.
Mrs. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Ostenski. Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyck.
Here.
Mr. Ostenski is excused, and Mrs. Romeo will be a few minutes late. Thank you. The superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our senior reading. Right off the bat, we have our first presentation. We have an Eagle Scout proposal for the Apshua school area. We have a Westford High School senior Eagle Scout candidate, Zach Rodak. Mr. Rodak, if you'd like to come up and make a presentation. Board members, you'll have a packet on your desk.
There's no audio on the meeting room, there's no audio. Nate, there's no audio?
There's shifty.
My name is Zach Rodak, and I am a junior.
Zach, you should just hold on one moment, please, or we might get the whole meeting.
Oh, okay.
Let me tell some jokes.
No, we're not opening the floor to you. No.
Guarino, you have to do a joke. How about this now? What is it? Is there audio now?
I hear it.
I hear it.
I hear what I saw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The Nate's got it on. He's got audio.
Okay. Go ahead, Zach.
Go for it.
My name is Zach Rodak, and I am a junior at West Milford High School. And I am currently a life scout in Troop 159 of Our Lady Queen of Peace Church. So now that eagle's coming around, I am looking for a possibility of eagle projects to do. I have already looked at a few, and the first one fell through because of some lead paint issues. So now I've come to this one. And so this is my plan. My project will be restoring the outdoor classroom at Apshua School. There are currently six benches and a picnic table in the area for the outdoor learning. My plan is to remove all of the current six benches and replace them with eight or more new wooden benches. More picnic tables would be placed in the 44 by 33-foot area. There are two places where plants once were, simply circles of rocks, that were, I'm probably going to remove them because nobody's going to really take care of the plants. I'm also, as far as things on, instead of replacing things, I'm also going to be adding things to the outdoor classroom. I plan on building a whiteboard cabinet similar to map kiosks in state parks that have closing doors to protect it. I include a few pictures, a packet with a few pictures with all the packets that I handed out, so you can take a look at those. So I'm planning on building the whiteboard cabinet, and the closing doors on the whiteboard cabinet would protect the whiteboard cabinet from being ruined by the weather or possible vandalization. And I'm also planning to build an outdoor podium for the teacher to teach outside and simply to read off of. As well, I'm also thinking of possibly adding a smaller angled, almost like, sort of like, half picnic tables, like benches with a, is it, I include pictures in the packets. I'm thinking of building like benches, like with small tables in front so the students have something to lean on while they work, instead of having to lean on their knees or lean on the edge of the side. It'll be easier for them. Then I have, I plan to have this project finished by the fall when the new school year starts up. Is, when I plan on finishing it. By. So now, my project will be beneficial to Apshua by providing more space for students to learn in the outdoor classroom, especially in these times. Building a whiteboard for use by the teacher. So the teacher has something to write on to project to the students. Having an outdoor space to use for science experiments, poetry, and other outdoor activities for the different teachers. The outdoor classroom will also give teachers a space where they can eat lunch in the outdoor classroom. I've been told that there are already a few teachers who do that at the current outdoor classroom, so that would be beneficial in that way. It would also be a good idea to act beneficial for after-school clubs to meet at the outdoor classroom. And it will also create a space for boy scouts and girl scouts to meet at the outdoor classroom. So I, sorry. I plan to start carrying out this project sometime between the early spring, so April, and early summer, which is June, and plan to finish it by next fall so that when next fall rolls around and it's still somewhat warm out when we come back into school, they could use it for that little bit of time before it starts getting too cold. Some other needs that I've already approached while looking to build the outdoor classroom is a nurse or a doctor present or on speed dial for any injuries that people might have during the building process. Transport for old materials being dumped, and a first aid kit for people's injuries in case they get injured. In order for, to do fundraising for this project, I plan to go to stores and asking for donations of supplies. In our troop, we have this program where we basically sell merchant cards or simply discount cards for West Milford. And I was thinking that if we are going to be doing that this year, that would be a good fundraiser for my project. I could be asking friends and family for the donations through GoFundMe. Or I could go straight to the Board of Education or ask the Apshua PTA for any possible donations that they might want to put toward it. As far as handling the transportation of materials, supplies, tools, and helpers, I plan to make sure that everybody has rides. Make sure that the COVID rules are followed if carpooling is necessary for anybody. Make sure that COVID restrictions, as far as schools go, is followed on the worksite. Make sure that all sharp and dangerous tools are kept safe with proper protection. Have materials delivered to the site by the supplier or using trucks from a troop member because we're going to need some sort of, as far as, just like a transportation of old materials going out, we're going to need some transportation for the new materials that will be coming in. As far as hazards go, COVID restrictions will be followed both while at work and in the area. There are certain regulations and scouts about the use of power tools, and power tools are only allowed for use by adults and ASMs who are 18 or older. As far as that goes, I will also make a printout of certain safety rules that would be applicable during the building of this project and have a safety briefing before work. Some steps that I might take to prepare the project plan will be contacting, receiving any proof of any permits needed, which I'm going to do, which is my next step. If permits are needed, taking the actions to get whatever permits would be needed for this project. Working with a builder to find more precise lengths of wood and other materials needed for the outdoor classroom. Redrawing my plan for action with more details, such as certain lengths, drawing it to scale. Then after that, I would go to the stores and ask for donations, working with people who have close contact with stores, as well as collecting donations through GoFundMe and family and friends. Then once all these donations have been received, I would purchase any other materials such as food needed to feed people during the project. Then I would, then I would purchase like all the other supplies needed, such as gloves and masks and hand sanitizer, which will be necessary on the worksite. I would then find and schedule volunteering dates that would work for both me and others. I would then make announcements to troop of volunteering dates, and then lastly, purchase food for the volunteering dates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodak. Thank you very much, Mr. Rodak. I think I just speak for the board by saying we don't have our complete support. It seems we're wet up rates and a little bit more cooperative. We look forward to seeing you out there. And if you ever need a set of hands, you know how to have fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a look.
Yeah.
We have one question.
If we wanted to make a donation, what can we do? Like, should I write out a check? Or do you have a GoFundMe set up now, or will you in the near future?
In the near future, I will be setting up a GoFundMe with help from a troop member. So once I've done that, I will probably contact Dr. Anemo about the GoFundMe page to let him know that it's up and.
Okay, now I know he'll forward it to all of us. Great. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just want to commend you. Mrs. Marion, you brought out projects and stuff and smart. I'm a teacher myself, and you thought of everything a teacher and a child would need. Really well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that order, we have our student council report. Ms. Carroll, if you're able to attend, we do have our student council briefing and training here. Do you want to do a report now?
Hello. Hello. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. My name is Faith Shrina, and I am the vice president of the West Milford Student Council. I'm filling in tonight for a manager who couldn't attend because it is her basketball senior night. In the spirit of Valentine's Day, the student council sent virtual Valentines to the kids at St. Jude's Children's Hospital in hopes of spreading love to those who need it. Student Council is also looking forward to planning out senior choice for this year and are having a meeting soon to discuss our plans. The National Art Honor Society is also in the midst of planning a couple of upcoming events, so keep your eyes open for some future announcements. Winter sports have been a go since January, and the teams have been working hard and embracing the chances they get to play. With a shortened season already, and on top of all that, the weather predicaments, they have pushed through it all and preserved. Girls' basketball got off to a start slow but have worked their way with a record of 4 and 5 and look forward to finishing the season strong and hope to end with a winning record. Boys' basketball is 1 and 6 at the moment and are aiming to get a couple more wins under their belt. Girls' fencing currently has a record of 3 and 3, and boys' fencing is currently 4 and 2. Both teams have two more meets and are, and plan on closing out their season with winning records. Both boys' and girls' bowling have had extremely successful seasons this year, holding on to undefeated records. Congratulations to both teams for such an awesome achievement to be proud of. Ice hockey has had a competitive season with a 2 and 4 and 2 record and plan on finishing their season out strong. The swim team just started their season and are excited for what's ahead of them. They have their senior night tomorrow and are looking forward to it. With winter seasons coming to an end, we want to also wish gymnastics, volleyball, winter track, and wrestling good luck for their long-awaited seasons. As well, some more exciting news is that tomorrow is the first time that spring sports can meet virtually and begin getting to know each other. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight. We are working hard to keep our spirits up in Highlander pride and strong character. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Good job.
Thank you.
Hey, great job. I just want to say that I have been able to watch fencing, bowling, sports that I have really never watched before. So, you know, kudos to the students and the TV Science Group that are going out to those events and filming those things. So, great to watch all this stuff online. I'm happy the parents are finally able to get into the gyms and the venues to watch their students play too. So that's fantastic.
Every day with their teammates, with their parents, with their, you know, competing with the win, whether you win or not. You know what it's like to lose an entire season, and we haven't done that since last year. So our high school coaches, athletic director players, they've done a terrific job this year. All winter, winter's winding up next Friday, and then we have our winter two season, which begins, you know, wrestling and some of the other sports. And then that'll take us into the spring for the traditional spring sports. So just give the children a much more, a sense of normality and abnormality. Thank you. Okay, the next up, we have a school highlight. When I try to do this at these meetings, because I know so much we talk about is hyper-learning, polar socials, so I'm trying to do some good news here. Right here in Westbrook School, we have something called the Westbrook Parents Club. We have two facilitators, Mrs. Donigan and Mrs. Stanley, so thank the both of them. They recently worked with the Milford Manor for a Valentine's Day feel-good moment. And here is the summary. A special Valentine delivery was made to the residents and staff of Milford Manor today, for Valentine's Day. Two statues to Westbrook students, families, and staff with their extremely generous donations. Each of the 90 residents received a Valentine goodie bag filled with Velveeta cookies and chocolates. Baskets were made from the donated personal care products and art and activity books and drawing materials. We also were able to provide the hard-working staff with a chip and dip platter. In addition, Westbrook students made this conversation hard to decorate the hallways, which would help with our art future and the discipline. Once again, Westbrook School truly shows the importance of reaching out and helping others. Westbrook School really does care. Congratulations to Westbrook School and all the people who assist in this endeavor. And last thing, we have our semi-annual HIBD ICP training and program information reporting for period one. That is going to be July 1st of 2020 to December 31st of 2020. We do the next report, or 21, by the way. So this is the first six months of the year. So I'm happy to announce we had zero HIBD investigations in the district during that six-month period. Obviously, two of those months were in the summer. So therefore, we had zero investigations that were affirmed by the board event. During that time period, we had 28 school trainings and two district-wide trainings for our staff in the ground. So it's been a tremendous improvement this year. We know our staff, in addition to being focused on COVID protocols and regulations, we've done a wonderful job caring for our children, and it's been evident because the children are taking care of each other. Once again, zero bullying investigations, zero positive bullying for the first six months of the year. We'll do the next six months over the summer.
Thanks, Detective Romeo. Any questions? Mr. Rodak?
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. I'm just going to provide a brief recap of our February 16 PD Day, Professional Development Day, that we, this year was a little different. We had a snow event that had passed by the end of the day and had it in our home and would have forced us to reschedule and possibly displace the day for students. This year, with the state of our educational environment, we were able to continue on with our Professional Development Day in a virtual format, and everyone was able to log in and complete their, their professional development, you know, from their home or from the location that they were, and were able to join in the weeks. You know, so I want to follow along with Dr. Anemo's sentiment of good news. You know, that was a great opportunity for us. And the fact that we were able to do it that day sort of encapsulated one of our themes for that day, which was, we called Silver Lions. And our, across the district and primarily with a focus in our 6 through 12 departments and buildings, we were focusing on just that. What are the, you know, we talk so much about the loss and the hardships and the things that are troublesome with the current environment and the pandemic. But this focus in our PD was about what are the things that we've gained? You know, we've come a long way with, you know, the things that our staff are able to do technology-wise, is light years ahead of where we thought they would be this time last year. So there's been a lot of development, a lot of forced professional development in just the case of survival. But we want to be ready for when we get back to normal, when our students are back in our schools, you know, in a traditional setting. You know, what are we going to take away from the things we've learned? What are we going to keep? What are the things that were just, you know, that side effect every Tuesday? Or what are the things that are truly beneficial? So those are the discussions we had at each department. Conversations were varied, you know, from department to school in terms of what those things were. Technology obviously is a huge plus in what we gain and the expertise that our staff has developed. So that was the theme of the day. We had another, a few other exciting things going on. One big thing, our 8 through 12 physical education department, they started talking about a program called Functional Movement Systems. And Functional Movement is a, I guess, a different way of looking at how we approach phys ed, you know, rather than a traditional sense. It's more of, I think, in the new standards, in the new way of thinking about phys ed. Phys ed is really the, I guess, the first line of healthcare, and that's really what the start of this conversation means to our phys ed staff, is how does, how do we transition to, what we do in phys ed translated to a truly healthy lifestyle? So they started that conversation on the 16th. They're going to continue it on our Early Disposal PD Day, which is in kind of the middle of March, March 18th. You know, so some very exciting things. We were able to have a financial literacy collaboration between the middle school and high school. This was the first year we offered financial literacy for our middle school students. So we were able to get our high school teachers, who have been doing it for a while, with our middle school teachers who are new to the content and have a good articulation about, you know, how do we grow? And how do we build on what's now being presented at a middle school level and take our high school program to the next level? Our 8 through 5 staff, we're very busy. They met with our literacy consultants for part of the day. They received their training in our new math resources, math. And then they also completed their grade-level collaborations that helps keep us together as a district. And one of the goals of those meetings on the 16th was pacing. You know, we've got so many students in different environments, hybrid, virtual, five-day. How do we make sure that those students are all receiving the most succinct education that they can, and then we're all relatively in the same place and identifying gaps and things that we need to work on? So that was a great day of discussion and professional learning, and it all happened from the comfort of their home in a way that we didn't think was possible. Like I said, one year ago today, we would have never had a Professional Development Day like that. So kudos. I want to say thank you to the staff. So many staff members really pitched in and helped to coordinate. I know in some of our fiscal concerns that we've had over the years, we've lost some supervisory staff. We had a few retirements this year that have not yet been replaced. And we've got a lot of staff members really rising to the occasion and pitching in and leading some professional development sessions in a virtual format, setting the rules. And I just want to say thank you to all those people and the staff in general for pitching in. One group I want to point out, which leads to the next topic of my report, is our music and art department. They are full steam ahead in planning what a district arts festival will look like in this environment. I don't have an announcement as far as the date. I don't have an announcement yet in terms of location, or when, or how. But we have a series of meetings over the next two to three weeks, and I'm pretty confident that in our next board meeting, we'll be able to share that information and the plan for an outdoor, in-person event with part, you know, partially in-person, partially virtual. You know, we're talking about, you know, they're talking about slide shows for art projects and all those types of things. So they had a great department-wide collaborative discussion on the 16th. And it's really a testament to the staff members in those departments for, you know, the passion they bring to this event and what it defines for West Milford and what we do. And, you know, their passion for making sure that this moves forward no matter what. So we're supporting them in that. And like I said, there's a few more meetings yet to come where we'll be able to identify the date and the logistics of how we're going to be moving down safely, making sure to follow all of our guidelines that we've committed to for a safe return to school. So exciting news, and we'll have more to report next month.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Dr. McQuaid, there was also.
Yeah, the only thing that we wanted to just highlight is that from the special services side, we did have the focus for our special class aides traditionally participate in the February Professional Development Day. So we did make that a split on mental health and autism. Both were requested by the staff to kind of come up as a topic, so we brought in speakers. So the special class aides had childhood trauma, adverse childhood experiences, and best practices, which we brought in someone from the state, from CASA, to do that presentation. And the feedback was positive. And the afternoon, they enjoyed having someone from POAC, Dr. Bobby Gallagher, come in and go over an overview of an autism training, and they allowed for our special class aides to ask questions and really make it more relative. So even though it was virtual, the aides were participating in the chat, so I thought that that was a positive thing, even though they were home. Also, as you know, I think if you were in Ed Committee, our mental health providers met for the day together. So that's all of our social workers, guides, counselors, CST psychologists, you know, Hollander Academy social workers. And they met with Columbia University to go over some of their suicide risk questions that they had because they asked us to bring someone in to be able to help vet that out, especially in a virtual format, how do you assess for that when students are, you know, across the screen? So they benefited from that. And then the afternoon, they spent time going over professional education and training for district needs as far as the staff related to the district goal. So I know the board came up with the district goal with us to focus on mental health supports for social-emotional wellness for staff. And those are the providers that kind of are planning for what we're going to do as the March 18 Professional Development Day, where we're going to have a sole focus on that for staff. And when we say for staff, we don't just mean the teachers, teachers, aides, custodians. We want everybody to participate in that, on that day. So we'll have more information probably for Mr. Rodak and I at the March meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Liz. I was waiting. I couldn't wait to ask you. So are you now using the Columbia rating scale for suicide risk assessment across the district?
So we started using a modified version of the Columbia rating scale. We started that last year using some of the work that State Fidelity was doing in Greenwood already. So we kind of modified that and moved it to us. But we are using that as our tool that's embedded in our risk assessment. So they have been using that particular rating scale. What we are hoping to do on the March 18th and then carry out throughout the rest of the year is to embed more of the Columbia pieces for like wellness and the community and really get that on our website and to parents because we want to be able to have those risk factors and just identification process out there.
So I guess I'm hearing you're saying no, that we're not using the actual Columbia rating scale. We're using something like it that's been.
So we're using the Columbia rating scale, but it's embedded in a West Milford form. So yes, we're using the scale, but it's not like we're just using the scale. We also have an anecdotal piece that we're using, which Columbia refers to as their interview portion. We are doing that, but on West Milford paper, if you will, like West Milford.
Thank you.
Does that help answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything in discussion? Okay, that's all, thank you. Okay, that's all right. Okay, moving along. Special reports and correspondence. We've had the minutes for the January meeting, the November meeting, for the December meeting.
I'd like to make a motion...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, January 5th to 2021 Reorganization Ethics Special Action Meeting, January 19th, 2021 Workshop Special Action Meeting, January 26th, 2021 Budget Regular Meeting, January 26th, Executive Session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Bruce, my president's report, I was, uh, Linda, do you have anything?
I just want to give a shout out to Alex and Mayhem for the snow day. Um, I know this has been a really tough call last year and I, I am 100% behind him and say thank you for all that he does. I know that he puts hours into trying to figure out what to do. So thank you, Alex, and hopefully this was the last week of snow. Let's hope you're fresh.
Pretty clear the rest of the week, but we know March of West Milford is, uh, is a roller coaster by itself. Thank you.
It's in like a lion and out like a lion.
Thank you. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting may be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes and then, time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign and register, provide if they give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Does anyone wish to speak?
CNN, I propose to close the session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have to put amendments to the agenda before we adopt it on page seven. We're going to pull a resolution, Personnel Student Affairs number 12. We're going to pull out the agenda. These candidates have gotten another position, so we simply turn on the, uh, number 12. We've got a full resolution number 12 and the Personnel Student Affairs.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Education, Mrs. Romeo, would you take that, please?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to approve numbers one through seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, I, can I just, can I...
Go ahead.
I just want, I, I just want to give a thank, Liz, again, for the incoming students coming from Greenwood. And I hope that, that they will enjoy our program and that we will be seeing more coming our way.
Thank you. Right?
I actually had my hand up to say that, but Linda just butted in on me, so I was...
Comments or...
Thanks, Liz.
Discussion about anything?
I do, Terry.
Okay, okay.
Um, I see that it is Music in Our Schools Month, um, and I believe...
Did you speak up to me?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Being that it's Music in Our Schools Month, I just wanted to say it is amazing that our fifth graders are now doing their band lessons. And, um, I know so many of them are just really, really happy and enjoying it virtually and it seems amazing. Um, so I wanted to mention that. And I also wanted to mention number four with the Chemistry Honors books. Um, I would just hope that we look to not teach honors courses, but to have an AP track and last of an honors, um, track at the high school.
Going off of what Mrs. Romeo is saying, in other school districts that have eliminated honors courses and do more AP track, their numbers are higher, they're rated higher in the state. So I too would question adopting the textbooks and having an honors track.
Any other discussion? Did it?
No, oh, no. No, sorry.
So if you can, if we have Mrs. White Marison here, if, if it's okay with the board, I can have her give us a brief overview of, of the chemistry honors and chemistry AP class that we both, what's up with them.
Sure.
Thank you for having me. Um, so in science, it runs a little bit differently, AP and honors, than it does in English or social studies. Science, the College Board has a clear recommendation that for AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and an AP Environmental Science, that students take high school level courses as prerequisites. So for AP Bio, the prerequisite is biology. For AP Chemistry, the prerequisite is chemistry. And for AP Environmental Science, it's both biology and chemistry. AP Physics is a little bit different. Um, there are multiple levels of AP Physics. There's an AP Physics 1 and AP Physics 2, which could potentially replace our Physics Honors course. The reason that we haven't done that up until now is because we do a blend of both of those within the course of the year, not one or the other specifically, but certainly would take that under advisement if you feel that that's a better direction for us to move in and we could research that more fully. The AP Physics that we offer is AP Physics C, which is mechanics, part of it, and electricity and magnetism. We focus mostly on the mechanics piece and we do some electricity and magnetism, but students who are interested in that test, which is a separate test from the mechanics one, actually do a little bit of self-studying and work on the side with Mr. Rose in preparation for that. So our physics honors class, our biology honors class, and our chemistry honors class basically function as our prerequisite for those AP level classes. That setup is a little bit different with College Board than English where they do, where they kind of substitute, and history where they will substitute for those. Question?
I have a couple of questions. Could the honors courses be offered at the middle school level and children be given the opportunity, especially with sixth grade now in our middle school? Could that be offered as a prerequisite?
The, the earliest that we could even consider doing that, some districts do biology in eighth grade. Um, I would caution about pushing things back too far because the concepts in biology that we're looking at tend to be on a very molecular level, which is a very abstract idea. And students who go into AP Bio need to have a pretty good foundation of that prior to that. So again, it's something that we could certainly look at, but, um, putting high school level classes into middle school so that they can take AP in high school doesn't necessarily have the students more prepared. Um, I would say that with our current, um, uh, sequence of courses, biology, chemistry, physics, by having students take biology as freshmen and chemistry as sophomores, we've opened the playing field to more AP courses in junior and senior year. Prior to that, if you needed to do biology and chemistry, you could only take them in senior year. But this way, junior year and senior year students are able to take advantage of our courses.
One more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there a way that a child could take a test as an honors, uh, you know, to subside the whole honors course, take a test to see if they meet the requirements and that way get into the AP class? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Um, we've never considered that, but again, I think the foundational material that students need to move into AP is so important that I would hesitate to test out of it so that they could go into the AP course. Um, we don't necessarily require that you're in an honors course to go into an AP course because we really embrace the College Board belief that everybody should have access to AP. Um, and the curriculum is the same whether you're in honors or college prep level. It's just the degree and depth at which it's taught. And so if a student wants to challenge themselves, then we encourage that.
Right?
Can you tell me the chemistry course progression, right? So they think chemistry as a sophomore, what are the other, then it's chemistry honors and then it's AP chemistry?
No, no. It's so, in freshman year, you can take biology honors or biology, which is college prep, or biology B, which provides more support. In sophomore year, you can take chemistry honors or chemistry or chemistry B, which provides more support. In junior year, it, we, it's, um, termed a little bit differently. We have physics honors, which is very math intensive. So typically, students who take that are very strong in math. Usually they're concurrently in pre-calc trig. We have physics, which is our college prep level and it's Algebra II based. And then we have conceptual physics, which I call math light. And so that's basically for students who aren't necessarily comfortable with their level of math, but we still want them to challenge themselves with physics. Um, so if you're going to do chemistry, we offer chemistry, chemistry honors, chemistry B for sophomores. And then alternating years, we offer AP Chemistry and Organic Chemistry. So our AP Chemistry is the traditional College Board course. You take the test at the end of the year. Um, Organic Chemistry is basically that what it is in college, the whole carbon beast, you know, benzene rings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the last marking period of that is a little bit of analytical, so they get some of that lab experience as well.
So, I'm just trying to figure out how the honors fits in. What are the key difference to, between chemistry and chemistry honors? What's the key difference?
So it boils down to depth of, um, information, independence of student, pace at which the course is taught. Those are the things that really differentiate, um, students who, uh, who opt to take honors as opposed to college prep.
Have we had chemistry honors?
Forever.
For as long as...
So the difference, um, and this might be a distinction that maybe isn't so clear. Um, honors used to start freshman year. It used to be biology honors, chemistry honors, sophomore year, physics honors, junior year. Everybody else took geoscience freshman year, bio sophomore year, chemistry junior year. But we've consolidated that now so that everybody takes bio.
Biology freshman year.
Irrespective of your level.
Yeah.
And that's including our self-contained and replacement classes.
Um, so if a child was recommended for chemistry honors but wanted to do chemistry AP, that would be allowed to happen?
No.
No, they have to take chemistry honors?
They have to take that introductory course, that sophomore level course first. And then after that, they'd be eligible to take that in their junior or senior year, depending upon which year it was running.
Could they take the AP test?
Any student can take any AP test. You sign up for that at the beginning of the year. You can self-study any, I mean, that's a College Board practice. What else?
Anyone have anything else to add?
So a student can't take an AP course in science until their junior year?
Correct.
And do you know of any other, is that just a West Milford High School?
No, this conversation has happened a number of times before with, you know, where I've, I've spoken to Ed Committee and to board members as well, where we've looked closely at the College Board's, um, recommendations for prerequisites for what happens prior to taking the classes. And so I, I can forward that document, um, that I had put together to Dr. Anamon to share with you so that you would have the opportunity to, to take a look at that yourself. I do go back and check it periodically because I want us to be as competitive as we can be. And I will tell you that the current pathway that we have, we have very successful students leave West Milford and go on to do great things. We have a, a student who graduated Harvard Medical School in their PhD program in immunology. We have, um, and this is in recent years, um, one that, um, graduated Berkeley in engineering. We've had one that's graduated Stanford in chemistry, both doctorates there as well. I mean, those are just little pockets of parents that I run into that tell me the great things their children are doing. So I'm confident that what we're doing is what best prepares our students when they leave here.
What about the research that says that schools that don't have the honors and just offer the AP do better?
I haven't seen that, but I would love for you to share that.
Great information. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else, are there any other questions I can answer? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else, if we're going to think of any questions like tomorrow or you're going to work again, just give me a holler and I can get to it.
Okay, any other discussion on any of the items? Since we're talking about science, I'd like to know more about number three and K5, Science Program. Okay. Sorry, you have to...
We wanted to wait for you to sit down.
I want to know more about it.
Um, so we have looked at a number of programs over the past few years as we've been implementing the next-gen science standards, which are now called the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Science. Um, and some of the programs that we looked at were FOSTKIT and Amplify Science and Knowing Science. And what we have found in Knowing Science is a program that strongly supports teachers in terms of helping to provide background information, um, in providing, uh, lesson structures, pacing guides, et cetera, that's very hands-on based. And so one of the things that I was very concerned about is that, as with all things in education, there's a new term and a textbook publisher puts the new term on the cover and you open it up, it's not much different inside and that's pretty much what you have. So Knowing Science is not like that. Knowing Science, um, and Mr. Novak has samples of the books, um, but it opens with background information, so it provides the teacher with a couple of pages of the science for the topics that are in that unit. And then it's separated into, uh, lessons within the unit. And for each one, it gives a pacing guide, it gives the activities, and it's very hands-on based. So there is, um, for example, in the life science in fourth grade, they observe crayfish and they conduct experiments on crayfish. And there's directions for how the teacher can do that. They put little notes in there because they anticipate the questions teachers will have and they already have answered them in there. They have journals that students can fill out if they're not science notebooking. So it's a program that closely mirrors the kinds of things that we were doing with the scope and sequence that I wrote to reflect the, um, state's model curriculum.
Does it offer any project-based learning opportunities?
It's, it's entirely based in, in themes and projects. So the one on crayfish is the unit on organisms and, um, needs for living organisms. And so there's a, a, a project-based piece on crayfish and all the background on crayfish and the experiments on crayfish, and then there's one on plants. And then there's an outdoor piece where you can take students outside three, four, or five times a year to observe the same location and look at the seasonal changes and record that. Yeah, it's, it's really, it really embraces the standards in a way that no other program that we looked at does.
And the teachers like that?
Um, I, at this point, I think the teachers will be happy to have that background information, that pacing guide, that stuff, all in one location. I think that that is what they're...
Do the teachers have piloted it?
Um, so we haven't actually formally piloted it. We're going to do that in the spring. Um, so the, it appears there as one, when you look at it here, it's one, um, piece, but it's actually a three-year implementation. And so the first piece is going to be the life science piece this spring and then move forward with physical science next year and Earth and Space Science. move forward with physical science next year and Earth and Space Science the year after that.
So the teachers haven't seen the program yet?
Some teachers have looked at it, but not collectively as a group.
But we're going to spend all this money on it when teachers haven't touched it yet?
If there's a group of teachers who have looked at it, they have gone back to their teachers and probably discussed it, right?
Well, so there's been limited that because there have been no formal articulation meetings this year because we've been in this kind of crazy hybrid situation that we're in.
You've been piloting programs and that's been piloting, it's been much less expensive than that.
Well, so what we're really, I mean, we're looking at this as a commitment because we're looking at the big picture, but what we're really committing to immediately is just the life science piece for this spring.
Well, so you bring up, so we're committing to the life science piece?
For this spring.
So the $48,250. So what you're saying is we don't have to commit to the $125,000 and the other $48,000?
No, that would be year two and year three, but for the sake of being as transparent as possible in what the program would look like down the road, we included all of that here.
Can I, Dan, maybe you can help, right? You were able to get that ST math piloted with some teachers in three through five and then K through two, and then we decided to kind of follow in the, let's work with that in K through two. Has there been thought on doing something similar before we?
So the process is a little bit different. You know, ST math is sort of a visual tool that they could access. It's a little different that we had to, you know, commit to getting new materials. No one does free pilots anymore, so you have to pay for pilot materials. In the old days, you could get, you know, the materials to try out. Publishers don't do that anymore. So there's a monetary commitment to go along with that. You know, so what I don't want to come out of this is that there's this perceived notion that we pick a program and not necessarily in with teacher feedback. Feedback we've got from teachers for the last three years, like Colleen has been doing deep embedded professional development with them, if they want a program, they'll embrace. They haven't had a program.
Yep.
So what they have is the units that Colleen and the teachers have written themselves.
Right.
And they're based on model curriculum, as this is my, just explained. But she's been the one in there with the teachers, and that's the feedback we get from teachers that they're, you know, they've been doing great job with it, but, you know, they want the support now. So now they've had a learning, they've been immersed in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science, and now they're ready for the resource to help them. And from our discussions and looking at it, this program best align with the practice that we're currently doing, that the teachers have already put that effort in. And we also feel a contrast, to be perfectly honest, because we don't have, I mean, we lost, you know, we lost what we did with the pandemic. We were going to be looking at this last spring because of the, this piece, the visual resource, we can just turn it on and send out a user name. Couldn't do that with this. And I'd hate to lose another year of teachers looking for something in their hands and not having it. This is one unit. Like you said, it's a pilot for, you know, honestly, I don't like to, I don't want to call it a pilot, putting everyone's hand in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards with it in place of our homegrown units. So I don't like calling it a pilot, you know, but we are going to use it in, I guess, under that phrase, and see how we go into phase two. But I think it's a necessity, to be perfectly honest.
Can I just add to that, that a lot of our conversation was how should this happen? Should it happen as a K2, 3, 5 thing? Should it happen as a K1, 3, 2, 4? You know, like what should that look like? And the reason that Mr. Novak and I settled on the idea of doing one core disciplinary idea was because we felt if everybody in the building was having this experience with this material at one time, it really fed the professional development that happens organically when teachers are working together and doing something. And so if we're just doing a little piece here and then, you know, kind of trying to build it, I think it doesn't feed that as well. And so that was part of our conversation about, do we do a grade, a grade, a grade, and build forward, or do we do a disciplinary core idea, disciplinary core idea, and a disciplinary core idea?
We do have stakeholder feedback, staff members who have had their hands on it and looked at it. And I believe a lot of the feedback is that it looks very similar to the things that we created here with your work and their work.
So this sounds like it'll instill some more, I don't know if confidence is the right word, but.
Continuity.
But, yeah, continuity, that's a great word. Thank you, Debbie, in what we're doing, so it makes a lot of sense.
Right. And I guess that's one of our, you know, one of the big themes this year, we were talking earlier about the silver linings. For the first time, and what I can remember is that we had some true grade-level collaboration across the district, you know, not just a quick meeting where it says you do the same thing and they go back and do whatever they want. Now, we have these ongoing discussions, and that is going to continue. You know, the Google Meet where we get all of our first grade or fifth grade teachers together, that's going to continue beyond the educational environment that we're in. And these are the type of things that, you know, that come out of it.
Debbie, you had a?
Yeah, is there any way, I know it'll be a day late dollars shortcut, I think, but is there any way I can, like, take a look at, like, a sample?
Yeah, I have.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll bother you later, Dan. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'll just say, I went on their website and looked at some of the stuff on the website, and there's at least some good stuff to look at. I did that before.
They also, so, and this is worth noting, they're not a traditional educational products company. It's actually the, William Banko, the founder, is a PhD, and his family's in science, and so it really grew out of a deep understanding of how science is done and how students learn and what's important in building that. So their understanding of the standards is really very deep and authentic, and I think that that helps. And the materials are so user-friendly. It really is. It really, that is the thing that, you know, I take for granted, my understanding of science and my ability to do it, and I think that when you're teaching many different subjects, as you know, in a given day, to have to try to find and build that knowledge base yourself is difficult. So being able to provide a program that can do that, I think, will really help.
Any other questions?
I have one last question. Sorry to.
No, it's okay.
But I knew that there are seven science courses provided by College Board. There's seven AP possible science classes. How many AP courses do we offer at the high school?
We offer four AP courses.
Okay.
And two concurrent with Seton Hall University, well, one concurrent with Seton Hall University and one college-level class. So we offer AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Physics C, and AP Environmental Science. And then we offer Anatomy and Physiology honors, which is concurrent with Seton Hall University. You can get college credit for that for a ridiculously cheap rate of, like, maybe $100 a credit. And organic chemistry is also a college-level class.
Two six college-level classes, is what you're saying?
Right. Four of them have the AP designation. It's important that I make that distinction because that's a College Board program. The other two are college-level, one you can get Seton Hall credit for.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No, I'm kidding.
Okay, any other questions, discussion, or any items? All right, roll call. Mrs. Williams, yes. Mr. Marino.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson. I'm going to be yes on all except three and four. There'll be no other than four. Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
No on four, yes on everything else.
Mr. Confling.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Okay, Personnel, Student Affairs, Courtney, you're up. I have to make a motion to move item 1237 under student affairs.
Second.
Any questions, any discussions?
I have something.
She's going to steal it. Go ahead, Linda.
I just want to say congratulations on their retirement to Mrs. Grizzly, to Mrs. Murphy, and to Mrs. Early. We're going to be very free access to our district, and I just want to say we wish them well in their retirement.
I was going to say the same thing. I don't know any of the other retirees except for Mrs. Grizzly, because she is a Westbrook teacher. When I told my son, he cried. And she is loved very much. Patrick Molina Murphy had just such a loving relationship with all her students. She's going to be missed, and the kids are going to lose by having her gone, I'm sorry to say. And Mrs. Early, I can't believe she's retiring. You know? I wish them all well.
Anything else?
I just, the same thing to, you know, I don't know people on the list, but I do know Nancy, and I just want to say congratulations on your retirement and enjoy every minute of it.
Anything else? And even though he's not retiring, I have to say, we're going to miss Brian Lopraski. He was a student here, he went through this district, and his wife and children existed with a delightful family, and I'm sorry that he announced something else, so.
Yep, good luck to him.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, roll call. Mrs. Stevenson, yes. Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Marino.
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Abstain on 24 and yes on everything else.
Mr. Confling.
Yes.
Mrs. Squire, yes. Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Okay, Operations and Finance, Ray, if you can take that for a day.
Sure can. I'd like to move items one through four in Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions?
I have a question. Do we have an auditor's report tonight?
We were supposed to have it last week.
Right.
They have another appointment tonight, so we'll be coming on the night.
Okay.
And doing a presentation. Normally, it's consistent with the resolution being on the agenda, but there have been instances where the two dates didn't coincide, so the audit is a way that it's limited as required by state, so they're just going to do their presentation and then do the other questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Any further?
Hi, Linda. I just want to say kudos to Barbara and her staff, because having only two items on this list, to have a corrective action plan, especially in this town here, I think we have to say thank you for all their hard work, that they put in day in and day out for the district. And I have seen many times in years past, before Barbara was here, that there were multiple corrective action plans. So kudos to Barbara and the staff of the world that worked so hard.
Thank you. Ray?
No.
Anyone else?
So the auditors will come to discuss number two and three, right? When, because that's on their report.
Yeah.
Is that something that we should table until they come, or it really doesn't matter?
Well, I'm thinking, we have it, it's the matter. We got the booklets.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Squire?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Confling?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number five under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? I probably did not. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, no.
Abstain.
Abstain. Nobody gets paid. No, no, no.
Mrs. Stillman.
I was looking ahead.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Confling?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Squire, Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
And I have abstain written right there. I'd like to move items six through nine under Operations and Finance.
Second. Oh, go ahead, you get it. You're cute.
Take it back.
Eddie just touched on six through nine. Okay, we're going to be a little more. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Squire?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Confling?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you. Policies, hey?
I'd like to move, change, move number one under Policy.
Second.
Any questions?
I didn't want this explained, I don't get it. They don't explain.
The old policy has the school board to take.
Well, okay, when I first read it, I was like, wait a minute, are we not going to vote on these? Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Any discussions? Okay. Roll call. Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Confling?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Squire?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports and liaisons, Park and Rex, Ray and Jay, Ray?
Yes, we'll do it in the web.
Okay, thank you. Safety, Mrs. Van Dyke?
We did have a meeting on February 4th. They went over some of the drills, that they're doing some of the drills and, you know, shelter in place, but they're not leaving the drilling at this point. But they talked about some other items that are coming up. We're going to have another meeting, I think it might be May, maybe Alex did remember. I was not, I did not keep my notes, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
It's on our calendars, look, I don't have them front of me, but they are, it's on the calendar.
Okay, and Superintendent Roundtable, there is a meeting this Thursday. The meeting last month, I guess, it focused mostly on the class issues and the hybrid, you know, moving kids back into school full-time, opening the school. But there is another meeting this Thursday, the New Jersey School Boards. We have nothing yet for that.
Oh, yes, we do.
We do?
Oh, New Jersey?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You mean to say county?
No, New Jersey.
No, New Jersey School Board.
If you have to say county, go for it.
Say county.
Yeah, so next one, next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. Good. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm feeling the love right now. All right. So the meeting was on February 8th. The new slate of New Jersey School Board Association officers were sworn in. On a county level, they're looking for a new president and two vice presidents. There's an unsung hero program. One student from each district is nominated. I think it comes from the superintendent. I'm not sure, I have to look at my notes on that. It will be done virtually this year. A board trustee from Clifton is running the program. Chris Jones, who's the legislative- Chris Jones, who's the legislative representative, talked about the standardized testing, which I know is an issue at this time, and the state budgets, that is, the issue with that is as far as the funding, federal funding, and because there's a problem with the timing behind it. Excuse me, I'm going to hyperventilate here all of a sudden. And then there's a, there was a discussion called Eyes on the Future. It has to do with mental health on all levels, not just our students, but faculty and staff as well. And there's a STEAM competition that's going to be taking place this year. Kathy Hallowa spoke and is reminding all of us that we will be evaluating our superintendent, and it needs to be done by July. And mentioned that food for thought, that a pre-evaluation conference by the trustees that are eligible to evaluate the superintendent may be something we would possibly do. And that, again, was just mentioned to all those who attended. And then there was a presentation by Joe Roselli, and I forwarded to all board members about the issues of social media. And I think especially after what happened just recently, we really need to be careful of how we conduct ourselves on social media, whether we're in meetings or not. Next meeting is going to be on March 15th.
With that testing, I know Murphy is trying to appeal to the federal government to cancel the testing. Is New Jersey School Board taking any action on that?
Chris Jones stated that it was not required for graduation in teacher's evaluation, but was required by the federal government. I think, Dr. Anemo, you said something tonight pertaining to?
There was, last, in the last two weeks, so about, maybe two weeks ago, we saw Murphy announce that they were going to file to the federal government for a waiver, which we all felt was going to be a fatal complaint. And then last night, the vice minister said they were not going to approve the waiver. So it looks like now we're going to have testing this spring. They mentioned they would have some sort of flexibility for states, but what does that possibility look like is unclear now. We're just going to have to wait for guidance. My guess is it'll look something similar to the Start Strong assessment we did back in the fall, so that's just a guess, which means it'll be a shorter, more compressed assessment than we normally would expect. So, more to follow, I think the story is still developing. A little bit of disappointment last night. Second period of education, I don't believe has even been approved yet by the Senate. So, who is making this decision, I don't know. It was a backbench, you know, assistant to the assistant to the assistant, who even released the press release, so we'll be really sure what's going on. We'll just have to wait and see. Hopefully we'll have some more information in the next week or so.
I can vouch at the meeting that the all trustees, all Board of Trustees and all people participating in the Zoom were pretty much not for testing at the time because of the issues that our students and staff are dealing with. So, the feeling is mutual, it's just, again, this took place two weeks ago. And unfortunately, I think it's going to still play out.
Thank you. Okay, New Jersey School Board of Education, Mrs. Van Dyke, do you have anything? Because I have nothing for this.
For New Jersey School Boards, not right now.
Right.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Since we took that early, that early, what was the name of the test you took?
Start Strong.
Did they charge you tax?
The Start Strong?
Yeah, since we took the Start Strong test, I'm wondering if there's some way that we can, you know, get credit for like one of the, to the state that did take it, rather than putting our gift to another state test.
Good question, yeah. I'll look into that.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, Registration, Mr. Upchinsky?
I have no report.
Okay, thank you. That counts for oversight, Ray?
Yeah, just three quick things. One, if we do have to test, we know that they're going to use the older system of Chrome, so all of our Chromebooks will be compliant for testing, which is a nice thing. Second, still researching that phone system, but we need to get something really up to date in our schools. And then, third, I just mentioned that Joey Jordan is working with Robert to come up with something for the board meetings with regard to our sound system. We do have a couple bids in place right now, so they're working through that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Chairman of the Board of Education, Joint Committee, we have nothing at this time, unless Mr. Greenow has something?
Nope.
Okay. Westmofford Municipal Lion, Kate and Courtney?
I think I read that meeting. They talked about the programs that are offering our elementary students a little bit more. It looks like a lot of the programs have started or in the works. Footsteps for the second graders, which is about self-esteem, bullying, and making good choices, is going to be next. They're doing a lot of fundraising to do more for our students. They talked a little bit about the LEAD program and how that possibly may not happen. It doesn't seem like the police can do it, if that's what I asked. I think, I don't know. They're also offering a seminar for parents. It's actually through the Plant Church, and it's all about navigating healthy use of technology and social media in a post-COVID world. So like, once we're out of COVID and our children are not on the screen all the time, how are children going to transition from that? Because I think it's safe to say that they're all pretty much becoming addicted to the screen. That event is Sunday, February 28th, so this Sunday at 6:30. It is a free community online event with a Zoom link. Yep.
Great. Any questions? All right, Old Business, any Old Business?
I have one thing. Usually at the beginning of these meetings, Dr. Anemo, you give us a little update on where we are with our hybrid. I'm going to do that tonight.
So we have our Mr. County meeting tomorrow. This is going to be a discussion point for our ED team tomorrow. And we're going to have the Education Committee report in March, March 16th, February 3rd. So we're going to look to continue to bring, develop plans to bring a higher percent of our students back to prior data, to safely moving back to prior data. So it's something we have not, we've worked on, and we hope to have some more concrete plans to the board, to the committee, and eventually to the community as well.
If I can just ask one request, as a community member, mom and a teacher, that those plans are made far in advance for parents to be able to readjust their childcare. You know, sometimes two weeks isn't even enough. So if we are going in prior days, the sooner we know, the better. So if I can just put that out there, if we're thinking about doing this, that it can be like a community method.
If you bring them back, it's usually easier on a day today than harder. But we're always going to have, kind of, the option of proceeding with the full original program if they so choose, or remaining in the hybrid A or B day if they choose. But we're all going to bring back four students for both A and B days. So it's a good thing they bring them back.
Anything else?
Alex, with that being asked, I haven't seen the chart that we see with the hybrid and the numbers, and I was wondering if you could send that to me this week?
I can, I'm part talking, because I think they're, you mentioned it back for a while, Dr. Anemo, I think you can.
Okay.
Send it to all board members. Okay, thank you. And Ray?
I will say that I noticed that with regard to the students that are going in school, especially the K through 5 schools, it looks like most days, we have probably 60, anywhere between a little bit more than half to two-thirds of our students already in school. So anything we could do to get that extra one-third back in school could only benefit. And again, right, I think things have gotten much better from an environment perspective. Back when, I think, we talked about initially doing this in January, right, you saw nationwide positivity numbers, it's 300,000. Now they're down around 50,000, and so I think it's a good opportunity right now.
Health numbers are moving in our favor. Vaccinations are increasing, and infections are decreasing. Inflammations are decreasing.
Thank God.
So CDC just, you know, diagnosed, so it's helping to help. Essentially, staff members that are fully vaccinated, which is two shots and then two weeks after your second shot. If they are fully vaccinated, they would not have to quarantine at home if they have their close contact. Which does help with our staff's concerns, because if you lost staff members for two weeks because their spouse has the positive, their child has the positive, or an in-law who lives and gets tested positive. They themselves are healthy and remain healthy, but we can lose them for two weeks. Two weeks, you know, different people. So we're going to see less of that in the future, as more and more teachers get vaccinated. I know some states have put teachers on a curfew list. New Jersey has not yet, nobody knows why, but they have not put teachers on a curfew, but that would help. However, we know that there's also making more and more vaccinations available every day, because just producing more than we did last month. So naturally, the supply and demand will balance out. It won't be right away, but it will be next month. This time, it would be a lot easier to get an appointment. And I would think by April, it could be something we could log in today and get approved for tomorrow, because they'll have shelved vaccines and empty spot still. So we're hopeful that the vaccination process moves forward, but largely under control. But all this is really connected, and you'll hear more about this after lunch.
Great, any other old business?
Just looking at the numbers, all of our elementary classes are around 20, under 20. Even the majority are under 20. So I think.
The whole class is.
Right.
18 and.
Some of them even have 14.
On average, it probably goes 17, 18.
13, 11. So I think that, you know, safety, we can do this. You know, these are small numbers. When you look at other districts that are going back five days a week full time, they have much bigger numbers. So we can do that.
Anything else?
Yeah. Two things, with that last statement that Courtney made, I'm also just really proud of us, and again, you know, talking to family members all over the country who have not been in their school building since March. So like, we are doing so good, and I love not getting those letters from Dr. Anemo with COVID cases, you know, those days I celebrate. But what I really raised my hand to tell you is a quick story that goes with Old Business. It'll be very quick. I spoke with four family members today who are students, and two, Johnson High School, a fifth grader and a first grader. And when I asked my family members, "How was school today?", I got the same response from all four children. Boring, boring, boring. It was the first grader, though, that is really important to this meeting, which is this. The child said, "Really boring", and I hated it, until the end of the day, when I play with Gigi Penguin. And I was like, "Wait a minute, step back, what did you do?". I play this game with Gigi Penguin, and I said, "Is that called SC math?". And the child's like, "I don't know, it's called Gigi Penguin". So I really felt that that was important to share with the board, that I heard it today out of a first grader's mouth. The other three are still boring, they said, you know, fifth grader and high school students. But the first grader, all they wanted to talk about was Gigi Penguin, and that just made my heart throb. So I needed to share that with all of you.
Do you have a Gigi costume on board?
I just thought that was important, that you know, and that sent me.
Is he going to wear?
Really.
Oh, you did? Oh, you're going to make a costume. You're dressing as a penguin.
Sound like that was a hard no from our attorney, huh?
Any Old Business? Okay, motion to close Old Business?
Make a motion to close Old Business?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
New Business? Deb?
I know in the scheme of things, this is really not a big to-do, but I spoke to Mr. Novak about this recently. But I just want to say out loud, because I don't know who's actually watching this, whether it's administrative, you know, teachers, principals, parents, and stuff like that. Since I've been working in town, I'm starting to find different about, for example, I found out about some fundraisers out at Upper Greenwood Lake School. And I would like, I always like to support the schools and the community, but if, I can't, I can't always be finding the fundraisers. And I really would like those organizations that are doing, and at middle school, high school as well, their fundraisers, if they can advertise it better. If we can promote it a little bit better on our school page, if PTAs can do a little better job on their pages within their schools. And so that if you want to support, you know, you want to buy something, you know what's going on, and you can do that. When they're, the clothing drives and stuff, I find out about it like fifthhand. And I just wish there was an easier way for those whose kids are no longer in the school system.
Three of us have kids here who are just bringing the flyers.
Okay. While I most appreciate that, that will not. No, I know, and I will, I'd be more than happy to get a direct line. That makes my life a lot easier. I just, I just, I don't think I'm the only one that would like to support the school districts, but if they don't know what's going on, and they don't know where to find the information, or if they do find the information, they have this, it's a little bit, I wouldn't say laborious, it's not there right off the bat. I just would like a better.
It should be on our.
Local school pages.
Our Westmofford school page with the.
Westbrook.
That's a conversation that Debbie and I had. And I don't know, maybe Debbie referring to people who also may not be connected with our schools, having, you know, there are people who want to contribute, but aren't getting the parent information. So that's, we're set up for parents of our students to be getting this direct information. But we also have a spot on our website. Each school has the school backpack, the virtual backpack. That's where all the flyers go that are school-related. We also want on main page have the community backpack. That's where the flyers are all. And a lot of times, we have redundancy where the flyer will go at the bulk. Like when the Highland Success Center sends us things, we typically put it both in the school backpack and the.
Community.
Community backpack, thank you. Community backpack. But to Debbie's point, who knows that? That's a conversation we'll have with Robert in terms of looking at the website. You know, the website redesign keeps coming up. If that needs to be a front and center link, periodic honeywell, just bringing people's attention to it. But again, that's set up for our parents, so. You know, I'd say I'm coming to your next meeting, so we'll talk about it there.
I, you know, and it's just that, I'm actually saying this so that the word gets out. So this is, so if somebody's saying, "Oh, this is where I can find it", okay, they're going to go to our Westmofford school page, and then they're going to look it up. I'm just trying to get the word out in any way, shape, and form I can to support our schools as well.
Community backpack is the main link on our community, and then school backpack on the individual.
I just hope PTAs stay on top of it too, so that we can support them as well, because it's all important.
Thank you. Any other New Business? Okay, motion to close New Business?
Make a motion to close New Business?
Ray, second?
Second.
Mike? All in favor? Public comment again. Okay. This is for non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Westmofford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested that should be prior to meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per.